All this special city council meeting to order August 3rd, 2019 at nine eight nine oh eight AM. Good enough. All right, first we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Next, we will go with the roll call. Ms. Jennifer.
Mitchell. Allison.
Present.
Sheal.
Present.
Rizzo.
Present.
Villalobos.
Here.
Coach.
Here.
Tenorio.
Present.
All right, we have six, so we have a quorum. Thank you all. So this meeting is a special called meeting to take suggestions and public comment on particular items proposed to the budget, tax rate, and options for expanding the police department. So we have a public hearing for that. But I'm going to go ahead and open citizen comments just in case there are any topics that aren't related to those subjects that the citizens do have their typical three minutes to speak on that. I will open the citizen comments just in case we do have anything that is not related to the proposed budget, tax rate, and options for expanding the PD. Then we'll close that and then we'll open it up to public, public hearing. Unless there's objection from the council, I see us maybe doing this how we did our June 22nd meeting with the public hearing, just kind of opening it up, not any time limits or anything for anybody and just kind of allow everyone to speak. Is that good with everyone?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Let's see, I do have some public comments forms. Item two. All right. Item three. Okay. Two of them are noted for, oh, we've got another. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and just open the public comment, uh, the citizen comments period. Anyone wants to speak during that time, we'll allow you to, and then we'll close that and then just open it up to the public hearing. All right, citizen comments are now open. If anyone's wishing to speak, please step forward to the podium. Introduce yourself for the record.
Good morning. My name is Sean Collins. I am here speaking on behalf of the Kyle Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association as a secretary of that association. The Kyle Citizen Police Academy Alumni Association, or KCPA III, has been made aware that an individual has made statements against members of the city council and that it was implied the individual was speaking as a member of the KCPA III. The KCPA III does not participate in any political campaigning for or against any candidate. Our members have attended a number of city council meetings, but solely in support of Kyle Police Department, not in any capacity as a political organization, and members have never spoken from a political capacity representing the KCPA III during these meetings. So we wanted to make that, I guess, publicly as a statement. Now, I would like to speak personally, no longer as a representative of KCPA III. I would like to extend appreciation to the city council for their hard work that they have been putting in to a number of difficult decisions regarding the budget for the city. The city is clearly in a difficult circumstance, balancing expansive growth against limited revenue. I trust, however, that the city council will remember that, especially for a city which is trying to grow in development, not just population, it is important to prioritize the city's needs over its wants. As quickly as Kyle is growing, it will be easy to see its infrastructure and civil services quickly dwarfed by the burgeoning needs of a growing citizenry. And while I am sure the council is keeping this in mind, speaking personally, I would like to emphasize this point.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. All right, anyone else wishing to speak during the general citizen comments period? Keeping in mind that we do have a public hearing on the proposed budget, tax rate, and expanding the PD.
Yes, sir. My name is Peter Partridge. I'm a resident and homeowner here in Kyle. I just wanted to quickly address the point that, sorry, I can't remember your name.
Collins.
Mr. Collins made. I am the person that filed and has made comments regarding the council. I saw a comment from the mayor who wasn't here today, which I'm kind of disappointed. I mistakenly took the mayor's comment as meaning me filing for the recall petition. He notified me that he was talking about another individual that was indeed on or a part of the organization, and I apologize for my misconception at that time. So I'm sorry if you feel that I'm trying to claim connection to you because I am not, and I would like to publicly declare that right now. I am doing this as a private citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Thank you for coming up.
My name is Bob Ferguson. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my wife and other senior citizens in the area. I want to ask a question by raising your hand. How many council members are close to age 50? Three? How many are 45? Forty? Or over 50? Okay, so majority of you are 50 or over. Okay? We have had several people we know that are seniors that have had to leave the area, sell their property because of increasing taxes. Okay? I would think that since the seniors seem to be very well-connected on next door, that if you want any bond issue passed, you might consider the seniors. I, and I think a lot, a lot of the seniors agree that we need more for the police. We need a presence on the east side. Okay? Now, if you want to, you know, just to suggest any passage of the bonds, you're going to need the support of the seniors. And a lot of the seniors, there's like 800 of us that are part of the Kyle area seniors zone. I'm not speaking for them, but I'm thinking that a lot of them would like to have a little bit more input from the city. The city has somewhat said there's five acres over by Lineburger Lake that they might consider using. That might be an excellent site, in my opinion, not theirs, for a police facility and a senior center. Because if I recall correctly, when we were out there, the mayor was talking about taking the road, I think it's Creekside Drive by the Shell Station, and making it a road all the way through to Beebe or something like that. And that's on the planning boards for the future. I would just like, you know, that, that land is there. The police don't have a presence on the east side. Nor, and we have limited fire coverage, and there's a lot more development happening out on, by Waterleaf in that area. Thousands of homes are going in. You're not, you know, I think we need the police on our side. And I think you could use, utilize a combined facility for seniors and the police and maybe turn the Krug Building, in my opinion, into like a retail place for downtown and not lose downtown Kyle. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Thank you for your time and your comments. Ms. Knight, did you want to speak during the comments or the public hearing? Sounds good. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public citizen comments period? Please step forward. Thank you.
I'll do it.
Yes, ma'am. I know you're aware of the homework. Appreciate it.
Ready, like, I'm Evangelina Chapa. I just want to bring, point out that there's a, I live on 700 Center Street, and a couple of months ago, my community, my little neighborhood, we signed a petition because we didn't want the CBD two changed, or CBD one changed to CBD two, and mostly because we were concerned about what type of business, and we didn't want the alcohol type business. Well, right across the street on Catty Corner from my house, there's a, where the Chipotle's Donuts used to be, I noticed they had an ad in Facebook that they were giving free daiquiris. So I just want to know how that happened, or, you know, I don't know the, the history of that. I don't know if they went through the city to get permits, but just to let y'all know, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapa.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak during the citizen comments period? If there was no one else wishing to speak, I'll go ahead and close the citizen comments period and move into the next agenda item, which is the public hearing. This public hearing is to receive input on the proposed budget, tax rate, and options for expanding the police department. So some of you all might recall last Saturday, we had our regular scheduled budget meeting. There were some additional items added to that agenda. We talked about them kind of all together, and it was decided at that last meeting that we should have another opportunity for citizens to come in a public forum to express their thoughts and opinions on the budget, the tax rate, and expanding the police department. So that's what we're here for today. Definitely want to just kind of keep it in, in open conversation, a respectful conversation. Don't know if we'll really be providing a lot of feedback. This is an opportunity for us to listen, hear what you all have to say. There are a few more budget meetings. There's one August 14th, and I think another one later this month as well. So there are a number of different opportunities, as well as we have an agenda for next Tuesday for our regular scheduled meeting. All right, if there's no objection, I'm going to open the public hearings and feel free to come to the podium, state your name for the record, and say your piece. Ms. Knight, if you wanted to lead us off, since I have a public comments form for you.
Good morning. My name is Lila Knight. I'm, I have been looking over the budget. There's still some holes in it because, of course, we don't know what you plan to do with the police station or the city hall, and that will be a huge part of the budget and will have an incredible impact on the tax rate. I did find quite a bit of fluff in the budget. I'm not sure that the council needs $36,000 worth of travel. Maybe y'all need to stay home. I'm not exactly sure what a downtown density study is, but it does cost $50,000. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that you'll go through the budget and pull out some things that we don't really need. But having said that, back in, back in 2012 and 2013, when the city was looking at doing a road bond, the city involved the citizens. And it wasn't just, oh, come on down to city hall on a Saturday morning and give us your two cents. Mr. Earp was very involved in that. There were large meetings with, they were very well-attended. I mean, we had over 50 people come and spend hours, hours, talking about it. And it wasn't just the roads. We talked about infrastructure. We talked about the police station. We talked about perhaps taking the half-cent sales tax and putting it towards an economic development corporation. I mean, we talked about a number of things that we're still talking about, that the city still needs. It was over $120 million worth of items. And those were very good discussions. And there was also, back then, a mobility committee of citizens that talked about which roads the city might need. And the planning for that road bond went on for 18 months or more. Your planning for this police station has been practically nil. You're considering next week putting it on a ballot, and you've got blanks where there should be a cost and the impact on the tax rate, and it's blank. You don't know where you're going to put it. You don't have plans for it. You don't know what it's going to cost. I don't think that's very smart. And in fact, I've heard many, not only, not only our city council members, but people in the community say that one of the problems with our road bond was that we didn't have the engineering done first. And here we are. We're, we're doing it again. I think it's important to learn from the mistakes that we've done in the past, and I, I don't think we're doing that. I think that we need to spend our money, the citizens' money wisely. I think we need a police station. It was on that list back in 2012, and it had a lot of support from the people who attended those meetings. But before you ask people to vote for it, they need to know where it's going to be. And they need to know how much it's going to cost and what the impact's going to be. And you need to get, you, you really need to involve the people. I mean, you haven't done that. So I'm, I'm hoping that you'll back off a little bit and really do your homework on this before you make a huge mistake. And anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Do we have any questions or comments from the dice?
I do. Mr. Earp? In proposing plans for, you know, the couple of projects that we're discussing, whether it's a difference in location of city hall or an expanded police department, all those different things, what are the advantages and disadvantages of a lease versus a bond?
Well, primarily, council member, the way that I would see the difference, and as far as I know, the city hasn't really engaged in this type of endeavor before. So this is somewhat academic, I suppose, and, and concept. So if you were to bond a project to build on property, what have you, there, there are several implications. One, of course, you know about the city's bond rating and the bond indebtedness. So any bonds that you were, that you would take out for such construction would increase the total indebtedness and could potentially have some impact on your debt service and your bond rating, which is why we engage bond attorneys and financial advisors to give us advice on what thresholds would be appropriate without putting us potentially at risk. The next thing would be in a bond, you are procuring property, owning it, you are building a building, owning it, and you are therefore responsible for all of the expenses, the upkeep, the maintenance, and everything else that goes along with ownership. Lastly, whenever you issue a bond, the, the property tax that taxpayers pay for debt service or what's called interest and sinking, the INS portion of the tax rate, that has to be whatever the tax rate has to be in order to make the payments back, so you do not default on the debt. So there are not caps on how high you can raise your tax rate if you are funding items with debt. Lastly, debt can be a voter referendum, or it can be authorized by council through certificates of obligation. So that's the debt part. The lease part, leasing is essentially, I mean, everyone's familiar with leasing in their private lives, I would assume, to certain degrees. Either they've leased apartments or houses at some point, or cars, or something, chances are. As we all know, leasing, you are paying for the ability to use an item. You're typically paying for a part of the depreciation and the taxes that are due on that particular item. And then you are just paying to be able to use the space for the time of your lease. The benefit of doing it that way, you know, is that you don't own the property, so you're not responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep and so on and so forth, usually. That's the case. So like those of us that had a house that the AC broke when we were leasing, typically the owner of the property had to come in and make the repairs. So that, that could be a particular benefit. The downside to leasing is that you don't own the property, so, you know, any, any changes that you make or anything like that obviously has to be with concurrents of, of the property owner, so you don't really have as much control in the leasing scenario. Financially speaking, there may or there may not be any financial difference dollar-wise between a lease and, and a debt service. It really depends on the sizing and, and the scope. However, unlike the bond counterpart, whenever you lease, that is paid for out of maintenance and operations side of the tax rate, which is capped and which is, you can only increase so much each year. That used to be 8% without triggering the ability for a rollback election. Starting this next fiscal year going forward, the legislature has graciously decreased that to 3.5%. So there would be even tighter constraints on M and O. So those are essentially the differences, you know, not speaking, you know, about, you know, economic development leveraging or anything else like that. Those are primarily the differences that I could think of off the top of my head.
Thank you. And when we talk about the cap, obviously, it's just, I think what that's trying to enforce is just a little bit more accountability on how we're using the people's tax dollars. It's not really a cap. It's just a, an opportunity for the, the, the community to engage in that voting process is what we understand, the way I, the way I understand it. I think the, and thank you for your, 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 your information there. And I think the other thing that we didn't talk about, though, also, when it goes into M and O, is that traditionally, it, when you lease, it doesn't necessarily have to come to the taxpayer for a vote. Under the current, under the current rules, since it's not 3.5 at this point, obviously, I mean, that's also an opportunity for the city not to take it to vote. And then on the bond, they have to take it to vote, so we have to bring forward a lot of information, engage is what we're doing now, a bond. And then also, we're not talking about the developer in and of itself that we would ask for an RFP that's building the building, right? So they build the building, we pay them. So essentially, we're, we're supporting a, a developer in our area for a building. Okay? With, with tax dollar money going to pay for that building, correct? That's essentially what we would be doing.
Essentially, that's the, I, I would classify that under the economic development side, where you're leveraging tax dollars to help support, you know, starting up a, a private, you know, facility with office space that otherwise may not build today without, you know, without, without guaranteed leaseholders. And then council member, there is one thing I just want to clarify. The council does not have to take the debt to the voters. They don't have to because the council can authorize certificates of obligation up to 20 million.
Sure.
So that, that's just one, you know, it doesn't have to be, but the council has decided that if that's the case, that the way we're going to go, we're going to have them vote, so, and that's acceptable, and you can absolutely do that.
And I think the, with the incentive, it's, we're not supplying them with a tax incentive, but we're paying them rent, and it would be a, an obligation of how long we sign the lease, right? Been three years, five years, 10 years?
I would think so.
So it's guaranteed tax dollars paying into the property that we don't own, essentially. Okay? Thank you.
To pay the lease, but not, not to build the building, correct?
Yes, it, I mean, if we, if we were to lease space in a building that's larger than the space that we actually need, then we would, in a sense, be, be paying with tax dollars to lease the space, which, you know, I think the council member Villalobos' point he's trying to make is that that's, you know, private property that we don't own, but he is recognizing, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, you can obviously correct me. He is recognizing that, you know, that, but, but that is being leveraged, you know, to, to make a larger space available than otherwise may have built because they have a guaranteed tenant for three, five, or however many years.
Exactly. And you, you're right, Mayor Potem, that we're not paying for construction, but a good business person that owns their property does their analysis and puts in for their return. So we're not paying for it upfront, but we're paying for it in the lease. They absorb all the costs, expenses, building it, maintenance, everything gets absorbed in that cost. So they're, they're getting their return. It's the only way they can make money. They don't build a building to, to have a net zero. They need to get something back.
Yeah, and they'll get that back through those that lease in the building, whether that's through us, and then according to the RFP that we haven't agreed upon or voted on, of course, that that, that lease obligation would go down as other tenants came into the building. But you're right, we're spending money either way. We're spending taxpayers' money, whether it's building a new facility, leasing out of a building that a developer would make. Either way, we're, we're spending money. It's just how much, really, and what, essentially, which option we feel is most suitable for the long term, I suppose.
And I think the other thing, the other items that we're looking for, we're looking at, and just, just so I can be candid, is that, you know, this is a short-term or a long-term fix. And typically, leasing is a short-term solution, and we're looking for a long-term solution for it. And if you look at it from a market standpoint, if you look at it from, from a, you know, just finance one-on-one, this is, again, this is a very short-term solution, and we're looking for long-term solutions in it. And again, you know, I, I agree with some that this is rushed. I, I think we can take more time and consideration for this. There's no reason why we have to have it. And, and let me ask again to, to Mr. Earp. In, in looking at this and, and kind of proposing, what'd be the difference between taking this to the voters in November versus May? Because I understand the bond, some of the bond implications really would be pretty close to flat at this point, projecting the market for bonds right now, all the way until May. So it really wouldn't be a difference at all, really.
Actually, there could be a difference because the interest rates are expected to go down even further. So one of the things I did email Scott was I asked him specifically about moving the election from November into May so that we could create the schematics, give a proper cost estimate to the citizens, and have more input. And there's a couple of things that I'm, I don't really have a lot to say about this because I've said it enough. There is a difference between a lease and a purchase. And you can say it 100 times away. You can say a lease is better, and it's coming out of the M and O. Well, the M and O still comes out of our tax money. We still pay it. Ultimately, whether we lease or we purchase, the taxpayers are responsible for that payment. Does it matter? There's no way around it. Same thing with the salaries of our staff, whether, you know, one of the questions that I had Scott, I said, did you figure out a way to have other people outside of the taxpayers pay salaries? Because I asked him a question, and he- Because I asked him a question, and he said, "Well," he said, "Well, this is salary-funded, this is, the staff time was paid for by, it was done in-house." And I said, "Well, in-house work is still taxpayer-funded." So that's one thing that I want to say, regardless if it's a lease being taken out of M and O, or if it's a purchase that we're paying, it all comes out of taxpayer cash, there's no difference. Another thing that I'd like to state is, when you lease a house, or you lease a car, that's different than leasing commercial or retail space. Commercial and retail space generally makes sure that the tenant is responsible for the maintenance, those costs to fix your air conditioning, those costs to fix the plumbing, those costs to fix things that are breaking inside of a leased commercial property are then expended back to the tenant. So those, there's not going to be any savings in regards to maintenance or breakage, because those, those expenses are put right back on the tenants. And I know that, because I worked for a company that managed commercial property, and it was my responsibility to bill the tenants. So I know exactly how that works, so there's no savings there, unless we get a sweet deal in a lease. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the lease will eventually look like. Another thing, too, that I'd like to state, the city is not responsible for economic development. The city is responsible for safety, we're responsible for infrastructure, we're responsible for keeping a low tax rate. Economic development is not the main goal of a city. And another thing, and this will be the final thing I'm going to say right now, is I do not believe, and this is my personal thought, as well as the thoughts from the people that I've been talking to, none of us want to pay for an empty building. I do not want to throw taxpayer money to an empty building and hope that that building is going to get saved. This is a huge gamble. We're paying for a building, we're saying, yes, in this RFP, we're saying, "We will pay until that space gets leased." That's a gamble, and I'm uncomfortable with gambling with taxpayer money. So for right now, I mean, that's pretty much what I'm going to say at this point. I really do believe that we need to give our citizens a full amount of money that it's going to cost us, they need to be able to look at the schematics, and then a May election will allow us time to educate our citizens, it allows us time to have the architectural designs look prepared, it gives us time to decide, okay, the person who was talking about this is, we can scale these buildings back to make them less expensive, gives us time to do that. So, and a May election, you're not looking at, you know, the November election, we're going to have Congress, we're going to have constitutional amendments, it's a long thing. Well, in May, usually that's just your school board elections, it's a smaller voting stuff, so it gives an opportunity to educate, and it also gives an opportunity for the bond, if we so choose to do a bond, to be there and get the attention that it really deserves. So that's what I'm going to say.
Did anyone on the House of the Dyes have something to say before we kind of kick it back to the public?
This is supposed to be a public hearing, so I'll kick it back to them.
Okay. I do just want to clarify real quick, you were talking about that, the short-term, long-term solution, were you referring to the short-term solution for the PD facility, or are you referring to the short-term solution for admin holding?
Just regardless of what we utilize the space for, just leasing is a short-term solution, leasing in general.
And then I did have a couple of comments or a couple of questions. One, definitely understood the comment about the time and kind of rushing this through and having, is everybody aware of the analysis we do have put together by the Finance Department that is on the website? Had an opportunity to kind of look at that. On our website, under the news and information, there is a police facility analysis where the variables we have been able to determine, there are some that are, I admit, that aren't quite fleshed out yet, but that kind of gave an estimate, ballpark figure where we're at. Is everybody kind of?
It's not based on anything real.
But my, it's based on the study that we were provided by Denny Bowles and the firm we hired.
It's an estimate.
Right, that's, I admit it, that's an estimate, but I'm just saying, do we at least have an understanding that that is out there?
Yes, it is out there, sir. She's putting forth, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be disrespectful to anybody.
No, no, no.
But you're putting it forth as a, as an information that we can take to the bank. I'm looking at it as, okay, they're asking for this, and I have no problem with people asking for stuff, but when you do ask, you better have all the information there so that I can look at it, and I can go, okay. I used to be a general contractor, I worked with developers a lot. Trust me, the stuff that you show on that, I couldn't even take to my life to get along. I'm serious, and I'm shocked that it even came to light.
Mr. Mayor Protem, can we ask commenters to speak to the microphones?
Yeah, we really need y'all to come to the mic. And I understand that, I'm just, I think that there, it says it all throughout the document, it's an estimate, I've just stated here as well that it's an estimate, and there are a lot of figures that aren't quite figured out on that as well, but I just wanted to at least know if, if that information, y'all were aware that that information was at least out there, that was my question. Mr. Ferguson?
In my career, I have been involved with construction projects ranging from a limited value of $2 million, up to $2.5 billion. If you want to get a better quality product, you have to go with the larger facility. The bigger the square footage, the lower the cost. Example, you quoted something like $250 a square foot, I think that's crap. The St. Anthony's Church last year built 9,000 square feet for $160 a square feet, including desks and whatever else in that facility, that's 9,000 square feet. I think that whoever came up with a $250 a square foot is blowing smoke. The other thing I have to say, if you do an end around the people, none of you, not even anybody in the office upstairs, will survive an election. You don't do an end around the people, period.
What exactly are you?
You were talking about an end around where if you lease something, you didn't have to go to the people to get approval, right? That's an end around.
I don't think that's what we're proposing.
Yeah, well, that's what you did say, didn't you?
I never said end around, sir, I was answering the questions of the difference between a lease and a debt service.
They did not have to go to the people.
The M and O rate, if it doesn't exceed the threshold, then it does not trigger the opportunity for a vote, that is correct.
All right, so if they ever attempt that, you're going to have a complete change out in the city.
I understand, and I think, Mr. Ferguson, I think the point of this meeting, as well as what we're trying to do, is we're trying to involve the citizens. I don't think any decision has been made, and I think that this is an opportunity, I don't think any of us, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn in any way, want to go around the citizens, I think, and yeah, we are, I mean, yeah, there, we can obviously improve, there's always an opportunity to do more, but I think this is an attempt, I think that the council in itself wants citizen input, and I don't think we have any intentions of going around anybody, I think that's exactly why we're talking about elections.
Okay, I know a lot of the citizens, I know all the citizens that I know are interested in the Police Department, okay, trying to improve their lot, okay. I think that we need to be cognizant of the fact that if you move something from downtown Kyle, you're destroying why people moved here, period.
Bingo.
Bingo. We moved here to be a small community. We didn't, we're not trying to compete with Austin. Austin's weird, we don't want to be weird. Let me tell you, no one here wants to live in a life in that type of environment that I know of. They want to be able to go home at night with their family and feel safe and secure, have a fire department that's close to their needs, I think we only have two in the area, we have the one, this one, and we have one over on by the school area, okay, I don't think there's one out 150 yet, but you've got a lot of homes going out 150, that's something you might kind of consider in the future. And the population is growing, therefore, the number of people paying taxes should increase, therefore, the tax rate should not increase, period. More people, more tax, you don't need to increase the tax rate, that ought to be considered as a plausible discussion with the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson, I do want to note that the property tax rate, I'm not saying your bills won't go up, because your valuations are, yes, going up, and there's other things that are going up, but the property tax rate that's proposed in this budget is the same rate for the past two years, at the 54.16 per hundred dollar valuation. Once again, not saying that your bill would not go up, because your valuations are obviously going up, but the rate is staying the same.
Just to recap on the Mayor Protem, that the average home value here, 200,147, average, that'll increase our, the taxes because of, due to the valuations, $64.90.
Is that including the 20 million?
Not yet, sir.
Okay, so what would it be if you had the 20 million?
That's, those are the things that we need more time to assess, that's, that's why we're talking about assessing it, and making sure that we understand what the implications are before we get into something.
Another thing I'd like to add is, while our tax rates have stayed the same, our fees continue to increase. So I think that it's very...
Implications?
A little bit, it's a little bit shaky to be able to say, you know, that nothing's increasing, because, you know, well, we may be stable here, other fees continue to grow, so it's kind of a...
Yeah, and I'm going to kick it back to the public, I want to say, though, that I don't think anybody was saying that nothing's increasing, just the property tax rate, yeah.
No, no, I just like to make, I want to make that crystal clear.
Fees are going up, utility fees, there's different things.
Transparency is very important to me, so, you know, while it's great to say, "Yeah, we've kept your tax rate the same," well, technically, it's the same, but we've increased your fees, so, yeah, it is hurting your pocketbooks.
And I'd be open to any ideas of how we cannot do that, absolutely. So, that's including from us, that's including from us. Let's go, let's go back to, yeah, we're going to kick it back to the public, because we really need to get the engagement from your side.
You were asking if we had gone through the, I guess your budget as far as the numbers that you have. Little do I know about that, my main concern is everyday life, taking husbands to the doctors, paying the bills and all that, I can't keep up with what y'all are doing, from one week to the next, I barely get track of my bank statement, my doctor bills piling up, and keep up with that? You can't, the only thing I don't even get on Facebook, and the only reason I knew about the free daiquiris was because my daughter informed me, it's in the, it's in Facebook. I don't keep up with Facebook. Newspaper, I hardly get anything from the newspaper, the newspaper hardly puts anything as to what's going on. I would think that if you were going to put something like that, for me, senior citizens, that's what I go through, I don't go through Facebook. So I wouldn't, I have no idea what you're saying about, if I know what's going on as we follow up on your website, so, I'm sorry. I'm glad we have fire stations, I'm glad we have the police station, I support the police building, and I support the people that are taking care of the citizens. I'm thinking that y'all are watching out for us, but if you're doing for development, forget it, but if you're watching out for us, I thank those people, thank you.
And I just want to clarify, I was not referring to anything for information on a social media site, what I was referring to was our city website, that information on there, once again, I understand, I just want to clarify, not directing anybody to any social media for any information, just want to be clear about that.
I guess y'all know my name by now. First and foremost, I see that the Chief of Police is here. Sir, I want to thank you and your man, excellent job, I support you 100%, if I could more, I would. Please bear in mind some of the things I may say may not sound like it, but I do respect you and I support you. Hi, ladies and gentlemen, I went through the proposal. First question I had right away, why didn't we know about it? Number one, I think some people on the council need to remember, they represent us, they don't govern us, they don't come to us and tell us, this is what's going on. You mentioned earlier about the RFP, okay, the RFP came to a vote, first time out that I know of.
Oh, we haven't voted on it?
Yes, it did, the very first, last Tuesday.
Oh, wait, okay, it came up for it, but we have not voted on it.
I believe it was voted down, as I recall.
We didn't know when it was voted.
No? You tabled it? Okay, so voted down, my book, sorry. All right, now, I went through the budget, a lot of stuff there, a lot of incomplete information. Let's use, for example, the issue of City Hall. You're saying lease is better, it's cheaper.
I don't think I've said anything, it's better, I just want to say the ideas out there.
Not you personally, I'm saying overall, the proposals, it's not cheaper. Mrs. Tenorio is correct in saying a commercial lease, you pay for all that, I've had commercial leases, okay, you also help pay for the maintenance of the building, upkeep, lawns, whatever, that comes out of your lease money, okay, any inside work you pay for. So if you need a receptacle change, guess who's paying for it? So in that sense, not a good idea. Number two, in a lease, you do not own that property, everybody knows that. So my question is, 10, 15, 20, 30 years down the road, where's the return on investment for the city taxpayer? May as well have taken that money and burned it. What use? What do we get back? Okay, so millions of dollars, who knows? Over time, who knows how much we have just thrown away, if we do a lease. Whereas if we build a new police department, we have the land, at the very least, at the end of 30 years. We can sell that land, we can rebuild on it, we can do whatever, okay? And the taxpayers, the only money they're out is what it costs to maintain it, versus with a lease, you're out everything. That's my big problem with the city doing a lease. You want to get into finance, I'll sit down with you, I'll talk to anybody about it, we can go over it. On another note, I am in support of giving them a new building. Yes, I know the tax rate goes up, yes, I know many of us can ill afford the rate going up, but we can even more ill afford to send our people out ill-equipped, and in buildings, have you ever been in that building?
Yes, sir.
Have you walked around that building?
Yes, sir.
Have you watched them trying to do their job in that building?
Yes, sir.
I've had occasion to do it a couple times. I don't want to work there, okay? We treat our police like second-class citizens, and I, for one, am tired of it, I'm enraged over it, as you can tell by my voice. I'm very passionate on this, they put their lives, their very lives, on the line for us every single day. And we need to sit here and actually discuss giving them what they need? Yes, the budget, we're talking, what, $20 million? How much have we spent on other things that don't even come close to mattering as much? How much? Okay? Going back to the budget part of that, we have no information. What are their needs? If I can send a question to the Chief? Chief, have you put out any information publicly what your needs are?
Yes. We share that also with the city council by the time that gets considered, and then the facility study was beginning to stay up for council, it's a bad deal in square footage, that will be after the process, and then of course, the city manager.
Okay, I haven't seen anything.
Mr. Harter, if you would like, you could request that information from our city secretary or our city manager, and they can provide you with the lists that were provided by the city, Chief of Police, as well as a copy of the assessment. All of that information is open recordable.
Thank you, I will do that. All right, once again, going back to buildings... All right, once again, going back to buildings versus this and that. Somebody mentioned a little while ago, the developer is not going to come out of this as a good citizen. He's not going to go, oh, well, it's for the police, so at cost. No. Would you do it? Would any of us do it? I go to work, I expect to get paid. A developer expects to make their money. And I have no problem with developers making money. But when you combine a city council with a developer and making the appearance, never mind fact, I'm not going for fact, I'm going for appearance, they go into this building under such a sweet deal, what's the first thing I'm gonna say? What is the first thing on my mind? Well, that's a pretty nice deal for that developer. What does city council owe him? What promises have been made behind our back? Who's getting something out of this, whatever it may be? I'm talking appearances, I'm not making accusations. I'm talking appearances, perception. In my mind, in just my mind, I don't know if anybody else shares this with me, doing that leverages our council with a developer. So apparently, not the case, but how do I know that? How can I trust each one of you sitting there to not be in bed with that developer like we have known in the past people to do? If you want us to trust you, when it comes to a budget, you gotta show us the numbers. You gotta show us, okay, square footage, this is the plan for it. You can't come to us and go, well, we want to do this, let's vote on it. With the budget itself, the fees, as mentioned earlier, okay, you don't want to call it a tax. Why not? It is a tax. The city is taking money from our pocket. This is called a tax anywhere you go in the world. The fees are going to be on a sliding basis. Yes, it's 10% water, 4% wastewater, but those actual costs for us, the consumer, fluctuate. Therefore, this month, it may cost us, just a number I'm throwing out, it may cost us $10. Next month, we have some visitors come in, it may cost us $14. The month after that, back down to us, $10. Then we have a big party, one day, our cost goes up to $20. So this fee being used to get money from us is a tax that we cannot budget for accurately. There's a lot of fluff, Ms. Knight said, there's a lot of fluff in this. And I'm looking at it and going, man, if I tried to run my house that way, my wife would definitely take a leg off because there's no way. We have to eat first, have a place to live. Our city needs to have its own buildings, and we need to plan ahead 20, 30 years down the road. We have to avoid, especially when it comes to budget, the appearance of, I don't know what to call it, to be honest. We need to trust you. You are in control of our wallets, our purses, our bank accounts. What you do here affects everybody the next 30, 40, 50 years, what you do. And I need you to understand that when it comes to the budget, because I don't make a lot of money. I work hard for what I do get. And I don't mind putting money up for Kyle PD. It's needed, they need it, we need it. But for some other stuff, to put money in a developer's pocket, no, thank you. Now, I'm moving on to the income for the city. You have, how many new houses have gone up in the last 10 years? How many new houses? Can anybody tell me off the top of their head, sir?
Over how many years, sir?
Over the last 10 years.
Over the last decade, probably in the neighborhood of anywhere from 500 to 800 a year, so let's just say, keep it conservative and say 5,000 new homes in the last 10 years?
Okay, we'll use your number, thank you, sir. Where is all the additional tax revenue from these properties? Where is it? I know my taxes have gone up and I checked and I did the math. Since I moved into my house, my taxes have gone up over $3,000 a year. Now, I understand evaluations go up, I understand there's a lot of other factors involved. But where, if mine went up that much, where's all the money from these other subdivisions that went in? Where is that money? What kind of deals has the city, and I'm not saying anybody here was involved with that, what kind of deals has the city made previously with these developers? What kind of deals are being made now for these new ones coming in? Why are we not seeing the money, to borrow a phrase? Can anybody tell me? Are we seeing that money, the tax, city tax portion of all those?
Yes, sir, it's, any of the property that's developed within the city limits, that's new homes in the city limits, gets added to the tax rolls. Usually, there's a year delay, just so you understand the mechanics of how it works. There's usually a year delay. I think the question that you're asking is essentially, you know, how, you know, how has that money, you know, been re-appropriated or been appropriated, because it does come in. Our valuation citywide has gone up about 50%, I think, in the last 10 years or so. So as a city as a whole, you know, about 50%. But every time a new house comes, there's additional demands and needs on services. So that essentially is the answer to your question. You know, 10 years ago, we had fewer police, we had fewer public works, we had fewer this, that, and the other. And as we add more and more homes, those people demand and consume services, which then in turn are reflected by the increase in the budget, if you will, by adding additional personnel to provide those services. So, yeah, I'm happy to talk with you offline, but generally speaking, that's the answer to your question.
Okay, and I understand what you're saying.
Mr. Earp, can you discuss the developer agreements? Have any of our developer agreements refunded tax money to any of the developers?
Property tax, sales tax, which tax are you asking about?
Property tax.
Property tax. I can't think of one in particular. If there's one that you're thinking about, I'd be happy to discuss it. I'm trying to think of one that refunds.
Well, usually developer agreements, they're all available online, correct?
Well, I don't know that there's in one particular place, but they are all available once they're done. The property tax is not usually something that is done, except in rare economic development circumstances with like an individual company. So I think maybe, I know RSI way back when, 10, 12, 13, 14 years ago, was a situation where the city bought the land and turned it over to them. So you could consider that, I guess, a tax.
I think that what I'm trying to go to is that I think a lot of our developer agreements, people have a thought that we're giving the money back. And I think that that's one of the reasons it's so important for us to be transparent and have this information readily available so that people can read them themselves. Now, generally, when those developer agreements come, we don't have much time to consider them. And I've literally been given developer agreements five minutes before I was supposed to vote on it, and that's one of the reasons I always vote no, is because I'm uncomfortable with voting on things I haven't had an opportunity to review. But I think that if we were to make that available, some of these questions in regards to, are they being underhanded, are they being sneaky, or they, you know, I think we could actually nip a lot of that in the bud just by having our records open to people, so you can say, well, it's right here, and showing them. And that's one of the reasons that since I've been in this seat, I have expected and pushed to assure that this information is easily available. So, I mean, I can't direct anything, but I'm just suggesting that, you know, a lot of this, a lot of the the anxieties could be curtailed if we just had it open.
And quite frankly, the development agreements that we do for residential-type neighborhoods have more to do with the idea of the developer not, the idea they have for the neighborhood doesn't meet our rules exactly as they're laid out, and they then in turn need an agreement, in which case we usually wind up leveraging additional...
Absolutely, but if we could bypass the anxiety, bypass people thinking we're being sneaky, bypass thinking, having people think that we're up to something, just by providing it, then we could say, Mr. Parcher, this is easily available if you go to the website and hit Housing Developments. Oh, you think that's something, I mean, it's just an appearance of transparency. You know, because I'm not saying that we're doing anything illegal, I'm not saying that we're doing anything wrong. I just think it's important that everybody have an opportunity to review the documents and to know. Everything's on the up and up. When you hide things, when you make, when you bury things, and things come through so quickly, it makes, gives an appearance of impropriety. Regardless if that's what we're trying to do or not, it's that appearance of impropriety that gets us in this type of a position. And that's all I'm trying to do, is keep us out of this, of this dark cloud of we're doing something wrong, when in actuality, not one of the seven of us up here are trying to do anything to damage a citizen, to damage our city. We all work very hard to try to get the city to progress. And rather than us having to be fighting perception, it's just so much easier if we can say, if you go to the city website, you click on developers or new housing, boom, all of our approved developer agreements are right there. I could say, Mr. Parcher, if you were to go to the city of Kyle website, go under New Housing Developments, you can read all of our developer agreements and see, none of our taxpayer money, property taxes are going back. Do you see what I'm saying? I just want everything on the up and up. It's not a matter, I mean, it's not a matter of anything other than just letting people have access. And it keeps us from getting those questions. What are you doing with my tax money? Well, here's the budgets from the last few years, this is exactly where your money's been going. Here's, here's the copy of the developer agreements, here's a copy of what we pay out, here's a copy of, and it's all there. And then nobody at the HEB is going to come up to Mayor Pro Tem Ellison and say, Mr. Ellison, what are you doing with my money? I hear that this developer agreement is sending, is giving my tax money back to the developer. Well, if you go look, the developer agreement is right here. That's all I'm asking for, it's just a little transparency. It takes a little legwork to put it up there, but it's there, and we're done.
I agree with you wholeheartedly.
And I just want to make sure we get back to the public here, so we can get all of their comments. Mr. Parcher, I want to make sure you get...
Just one more thing that I'm looking at, as I used to be...
Take your time, I just want to make sure...
Okay, as I, I agree with Councilwoman Tenorio, by the way. I've had opportunity to read a lot of the verbiage in these contracts, and if I was a developer, believe me, I'd move my whole business here. Moving on to the actual things that were put out last Saturday, one thing I did not see was construction times, relocation schedules, et cetera. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that the mayor said it's time we took care of the Kyle Police Department and their needs. I recall seeing that. In my view, 10, 15 years down the road, while everything's getting built, is not good enough. We need to start working for them now, as in, I would agree with going for a may election on a bond. But we also, if you want to give us information, we need information we can use. Now granted, not everybody in the city of Kyle can go over construction timings and schedules, et cetera. I can, I'm sure you can, sir. And we can look at it, put together meetings and say, okay, we're going to translate this into plain English. Because one of the reasons, especially with what I'm involved with right now, one of the reasons people don't come here, nothing's in plain English. They go, I'm lost. Ms. Knight said so herself a few minutes ago. Mrs. Chapa said, I don't get it, I don't understand it. Put it in plain English, please. Now, as for construction times, what do we know, how long we're looking at before? Let's use the moving city hall over there. Let's use that as an example. Do we have any idea on the time we start construction? Or the developer starts it, and the time Kyle Police Department moves in, do we have any timings on that? As to how long, how many years, how many days, how many months, whatever, how long do we have from the time they start? Kyle moves, the city hall moves, renovation begins on this building, and then Kyle PD moves into this building, that's just one of the options, and I'm not saying that's what's happening. I'm saying, do we have any timeframes on that? Because that's also very important. And I know some people may disagree with me, some people may look at me like I'm an idiot, but once again, I used to do this for a living. It is a very important factor. You cannot do an assessment without disinformation. Otherwise, whatever you put on that paper is worth what it's written on. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parcher. Still open public hearing, anyone wishing to speak, just please come to the microphone so we can hear you. We are being recorded as well, so it's important that we use the mics. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Amanda Stark. Want to say thank you for including the public by having these meetings. I know that there has been a lot of discussion on indoor, I mean, next door, Facebook. A lot of the community members, citizens have had questions. I have seen most, if not all, the questions answered, and if they can't get an answer, they are directed to where they can get the answers from, so I just want to thank you all for that. Ms. Tenorio had mentioned that if we move the election for this to May, how does that affect when they can actually get this done? Because for right now, this has to be voted on in just a couple of weeks in order to be put in this budget. How would it affect it if it was voted on in May? So I think it's a good idea to have it, have a little bit more time to be able to figure out what to do with this and what the best route would be, given that it's just a couple more weeks, it's tough. So if it is put in May, then how much longer would it put for this to actually happen? And then when can we actually get it put in the budget?
I don't think that this would be the budget that it would affect, this is just, I can't speak for all seven of us. Even if we were to put it in a November election, it wouldn't affect until the next budget anyway, so...
So it would not be in this budget?
No.
Gotcha, okay.
It goes into effect October 1st. So we have until August 19th to get something on the ballot.
For November.
For this November.
Correct, so that's what I'm asking, so if we push it until May, then when would be the next? It still wouldn't be for a while that we would be able to vote on it.
Well, in our next budget, we'd come up in October.
So it'd still be that much longer?
So every summer, we go through this process. Summer's budget season for us. So we started, I believe, in May this year with workshops, and then we go throughout. We have more budget meetings that will go past. The August 19th, we'll probably finalize the budget somewhere in September with the vote.
So we're still pushing it about a year?
As far as what's it?
So it'll be another year by the time it can be put back on the budget? So we're pushing this a whole lot longer for when it could actually be moved?
Actually, no, not really. If you think about it, all we're doing is giving the same opportunity. What's going to happen, let's say we decide to go ahead and put this on the ballot in November. It's still going to take time to get the schematics done. It's still going to take time for the architecture, it's still going to take time to get it off the ground, to find a location and all that time. So during the time that we're getting ready for the May ballot, all that stuff's going to be getting done too.
Correct.
And so it doesn't really have an effect. It's just a matter of, what happened with the road funds, and Mayor Mitchell actually made light of this when he was running.
Can we just keep the...
Well, let me, if you give me an opportunity to explain where I'm going with this, then you'll get it. One of the biggest complaints was that we didn't draw our schematics, we didn't do our engineering before we went out for bonding. And so then when we had these overages and underages, it was very difficult to understand it because we weren't completely transparent with everything the way it was supposed to go. So if we do it this way, you have an actual number, you actually have an architectural drawing, you've had an opportunity to review all the sites, and so that's what we're trying to do. So in the end, later on, six years down the road, people aren't saying, well, now we're over budget because we only did this. Now we didn't know what was going on. So it's just an opportunity to give you, a taxpayer, and me, a taxpayer, an opportunity to know, this is exactly what it's going to cost us to get it done, and this is what it's going to look like. It's still going to take time to build, so the time is going to be working in to get those plans done, and all of that'll be done, so it's just a matter of the bond election date, and it isn't going to affect us right now. This building isn't going to be hitting us this budget cycle anyway. Because even if they were to build the new city hall and we move over there, it still takes time to build. So, I mean, it's, if you do it in May, it affects the very next budget cycle too, you know? So this is really going to hit that next budget cycle.
Okay, gotcha. That's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Ferguson.
A simple question. Has the city considered, like companies, bringing in a independent team to assess the efficiency of the organization? Usually that results in a considerable reduction in the budgetary requirements of the organization so they can plan for future growth. You have the proverbial phrase is, the fox is watching the chicken house. Okay? And we're the chickens. Okay? So maybe if we had an external to the government agency come in and assess the efficiency of the organization, independent, to see if we actually need 15 new positions? Or do we need 15 less positions? Or do we need to cut the salaries here to create competitiveness? Or are there too many people that are, have the same family relationship in the city government? Questions that everybody has. Okay? I think you would find out that there's no need for a lot of things. Okay? Or that grandiose plans for a $20 million facility may not be necessary. What you might need is $10 million for the police department. And the city could use existing facilities that they have or properties like where the Parks Department is now temporarily located. You can move the Engineering Department over there. The question is, why do you want to spend the money? As to the developers, we are of the, have heard through the grapevine that the city is giving tax-free status to any company that was going to move into the area like for five years. Is that true? Yeah, hey. There's like a Korean company moving in and they get free taxes for five years? Is that true?
This is the police department, right? We're public hearing about the police department.
Well, we're talking about money here.
And that would have an effect in the budget.
Is that true?
I don't know the details about that particular project because I didn't work it. But the council negotiated, so maybe one of them can answer for you.
Which, what do you?
He's talking about EMF.
EMF, that's coming into the area. We heard that they were going to get tax-free for five years on their facility. Yeah, the new South Korean thing, yeah.
Being built over here?
Yeah.
That's a question.
Yeah. Or?
Well, that's, I'm going to be honest, I can't recall the actual contract on instant recall. And so I'm happy to ask for an op, if you'd give us an opportunity to get that information, I'll be happy to share it with you. I just, I don't want to tell you something that isn't a complete and truthful, honest answer. And I just, without having the doc, I mean, since then, I've slept and I've lived. So my recall isn't there yet. But I'm happy to get that information. If you'll give your email to Mr. Earp or the city secretary, I'll be happy to get that information to you.
The other simple question relating to budget is we have developers developing properties. They develop it to make a profit. Why are we responsible for a lot of the services going into that area? Like we're putting $40 million into the water system and sewage system over the next period of time? Why aren't the developers responsible for that, a portion of that? Since they're the ones making the money off of the property, shouldn't they be responsible for bringing some of the services into the area? Like that line from Buta over here?
I, I can answer this question for y'all, if y'all, if y'all are okay. So, so Mr. Ferguson, this is a, a common misconception that development isn't paying for its way. Development pays 100% of the cost of delivering the services to that development period every single time. The, the, it doesn't matter if the water line is a mile away. If they want water, they pay to build that line to themselves and it's sized appropriate for, to provide the service for their needs. So in certain instances or circumstances, water, wastewater are typically the infrastructure we're talking about. Sometimes it's roads, but usually it's water and wastewater. If the development needs, say, a eight-inch water line to serve their project, and the eight-inch water line is, you know, 500 meters away or whatever, they build the line from wherever it currently terminates up to their property, internal to their property and all their service lines. If however, we decide as a city that that eight-inch is, is actually, the location of that eight-inch is along a major transmission line and it needs to be a 12-inch or something larger to provide utility services beyond that particular developer, then the city will upsize the line and only pay the incremental difference. So in other words, if we decide to upsize it from an eight to a 12, per se, the, what the developer would pay to put in the eight-inch is what the developer pays, and then we pay the difference of upsizing it from an eight to a 12, which is usually a small amount compared to the overall infrastructure cost. Now, the line that you referenced specifically between Buta and Kyle, that is a transmission line that is meant to deliver water to Buta ultimately. It's not a developer line, it's not anything other than, than what it is. That is through the Alliance Water Project, which is separate from our own water utility. We are a partner in that for our future water. But that particular transmission line is being paid for by Buta, Kyle, San Marcos, and Canyon Regional Water Authority. All of us together are paying for that. So development pays 100% of its way, 100% of the time.
Okay. Then if we're spending this $40 million for the water line, not from Buta, but from?
Garrixal Springs.
What?
Garrixal Springs.
Yes, okay. We're paying for that big line. Wouldn't it be more effective for our city to say, okay, we're going to give our citizens a reduction in their tax if they go desert escaping? So they don't use water, all the excessive water? There's only a limited supply of water.
That's true. However, we have to pay for water whether we use it or not. So if you don't use the water, you're still going to be paying for a water bill because we still have to pay to the entities who control the water to have the water. So for example, G B R A is a, is a current supplier of the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority. We have about 6,000 acre feet of water, maybe a little bit more or less, but that's about the right number, reserved in Canyon Lake. Okay? We pay for that water whether we take a drop of it or not. Then the price goes up if we do take the water, because then we pay to treat it and to bring it to us. We pay the debt service on the, on the pipeline to bring the water to us, whether we take a drop of water or not, because the pipeline has to be there to deliver the water. So the concept of not using your water to save, you know, the expenses is some, I mean, yes, you can, you can decrease the, the O and M portion because you're not paying for the treatment of that water, but at some point, there's a fixed cost that you're always going to pay no matter what, whether you use a drop of water or not.
Okay. I, I can remember being in Houston during the drought that they had. They got their water from Conroe and Lake Livingston into Lake Houston. And all of a sudden, Conroe and Lake Livingston cut their water off to Lake Houston. And Lake Houston became a mud pond, which was a major supply of water for the city. And there was a big legal battle trying to get the water turned back on. Will something like that happen?
It, it can always happen. Every utility that owns water has conservation rules in place for droughts. We do take some groundwater currently, so we take water from the Edwards Aquifer, you know, Barton Springs and the, and the Edwards Aquifer segments. Whenever they start to see their, their water levels drop, they institute reductions. And, and that's why whenever you hear us quote water numbers, you will hear us differentiate between how much water we have the right to and how much water we have as firm supply. Firm supply means if with all of the drought restrictions in at their highest level, how much water can we still guarantee that we can produce? And so there's, so that's about a 40% reduction through drought, drought restrictions. So we have nine or 10 million, we, it goes down to around five and a half to six firm.
How is that going to increase with the increasing population?
By adding the water through Alliance. So the Alliance project is bringing us approximately another 4 million gallons per day. That will then in turn have drought restrictions on it, but it would be like, say, 30 or 40% of that number. So you get down to two and a half million or so per day firm, right? And then the next phase is even more, gets us up to around nine with about six firm, which is where we are today. So in essence, our total supply would double and our firm supply would double to build a handle, any of the growth, be it residential or commercial.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Yeah, it's still open. We're happy to continue to hear your comments.
Sorry, I do have one more question. I know that the chief did say that there was, that he put in his, his request and what he needed for the PD. And this is about the budget, but, and I don't know if you guys can answer this or if there's something that, that the chief is going to have to answer. This kind of has to be voted on about what works best for the PD as well, because we don't want to spend a bunch of money on something that's, I mean, they move into city hall, they still have to make all kinds of changes to make it so that it actually fits the police department and what they need. So I'm kind of wondering what the police department feels is the best option for them.
Yeah, absolutely. And we, when did we start? When did Chief, you all start working with the firm?
Several years ago.
And identifying, because I know we've done studies in the past. This was kind of to get an update on the study as well. So if you could give us a little bit of a timeframe on y'all's input with the firm that we've been working with and how much influence y'all have had, kind of telling us what we need or the department needs.
Absolutely, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim and council, for the record, my name is Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police. I apologize, I stepped out to get some information on a call for service, so I don't know the full context, but I understand what you just asked me to explain. So in 2010, 2011, the city had engaged in a facility study with Brinkley Sargent, a firm that's primarily based out of Dallas but has offices elsewhere and in the Austin area. They provided that study in 2011 to the city council for consideration, and it's primarily based on space needs. They are doing a space needs analysis. As part of that space needs analysis, they obviously have to take into account future growth for staff so that they can account for that space. And that's primarily all they've ever been asked to do until some very recent times. So they turned in that study and we were unable to move forward with a new facility. Obviously, we did move into the bank building. They did, at the, kind of at the last minute, help with that move into the bank facility and gave some design options. The city chose some of that and moved forward basically in-house. So now move forward to 2018, and we realize that it's time again to look into new facilities for the police department as we have exceeded the space that's in there with our current staff and storage and whatnot. So again, the, the same firm, and now they're Brinkley Sargent and Wiggington, were engaged, have expanded their, their title. They, they were engaged again to update their study. And then over time, the request of them has been amended to look at various options from different time. They were initially engaged in the fourth quarter of last year, I'm sorry, the first quarter of this year, the 2018, around October, to look at space needs. Over time, they were given different tasks to look at the potential use of this city hall, the potential use of the existing police department and other options along the way, along that path. I realize that some of the questions that have been asked today concerned the lack of schematics and drawings and footprints, floor plans and whatnot. I have to say on their behalf, that's not what they were asked to do. The firm was asked at that point to just provide the space needs, and we've yet to make it to the point where Councilmember Tenorio and, and several others have alluded to, that those are, those would be obvious next steps for the police department. So they provided a space needs analysis. It, it also includes, as I mentioned, some staffing analysis as well because they compared our, our growth to other cities that were similarly situated to Kyle. They looked at how did their police staffing numbers grow according to their staff and their needs, and it kind of just gives us a snapshot of what Kyle could expect. It certainly does not obligate the city council to anything. It can just show you a good apples-to-apples comparison of cities who are similarly situated to Kyle and what you can expect for the future. Currently, you asked us to speak about our current needs. They did sit with us on several occasions and ask us to predict our growth and talk about our needs. For example, interview rooms, locker rooms, showers, facilities, storage, safety of our vehicles and staff, secured parking. A lot of questions were asked from the company that was hired as to our needs, and they were going to incorporate those in their, the two platform, really the, the space needs analysis that they were going to provide. They did not go into the full descriptions of those because that was not their intent, it's just to provide the space needs. I'd be happy to answer any questions. They did, we did engage them in that. We, we shifted their focus a time or two as new opportunities came up for discussion. And they were able to present their report just a few short weeks ago to council, and they're simply waiting the next set of instructions as needed. But I'll be happy to answer anything that I left out, and I apologize.
Along, along with that assessment. Quick, Mr. Villalobos, let's just go back to the resident, because this is a public hearing for them. Did you kind of get more or less your questions answered or?
What is the ultimate ideal situation to have a brand-new building? And then do you have an idea of where that would be, if that were the case?
So obviously, we provided to the company the, the various components of a well-functioning police department, and I'll give you just a quick example. An interview room suite. Currently, we operate with one interview room at the police department. And unfortunately, there are times when we arrest more than one person that needs to be interviewed, and we don't have an interview suite. An interview suite would have all the right recording equipment and space needs and such. Take that and just expand up on that to various areas within the police department. We did share that with the, the firm. They came back with a square footage analysis that gives us basically everything that we need, but it also allowed room for growth into the future. I think they typically kind of call those 20-year building plans, something that you build today, but it will sustain your community for up to 20 years. And they provided that, along with other options that council asked them to consider. So things that we need today that we don't have, that were, that are, have highly, been highly publicized are obviously locker rooms and places for the men and women to come to work, wash their, their dirty uniforms if they get things on them and they don't have to carry them home to wash. The interview suite, there are certain things regarding our evidence room and processing of evidence, storage of evidence, that we need to upgrade to keep up with the future. And then there's just a simple footprint. Our staff has grown over the years, and with that, we are, we are completely out of space. We currently occupy 300 West Center as an address location where, where multiple officers, dispatchers, and other staff members such as code enforcement, animal control operate out of, and then we have 111 North Front. The combination of the two facilities is inadequate for our current needs, and it's going to have to be much larger as the study has indicated.
So if we do practice new space, all of these combined will be on space instead of scattered?
So they, good point. They've certainly looked at various options as they were directed to do so. When you ask a police department, what, what do you want? What do you think works the best? There are challenges with the downtown location for security reasons, parking, future growth, and just to name a few. Obviously, a standalone site that allows growth and allows proper security planning and allows you to build a facility that was intentionally built to be a secured police facility, goes a long way with police officers. When you retrofit a building, pick any building, I'll take the bank building for example. The bank building was never intended to be occupied by the number of staff members that we have occupying that every day, and that presents a number of challenges. Obviously, it's many years old. I think it was built in the 70s, so we're talking at least 40 years old. And it certainly was not meant to house the amount of techno, or pieces of technology that we have. So it wasn't wired appropriately, it wasn't secured appropriately, it was a, a public, it was a building that was more open to the public as a bank building with very secured vaults like banks have. Well, in our facility, we need the entire facility to be secured at all times and have a large amount of technology that we use and to secure that. And it's been a challenge with that building. So purposefully built police departments with good plans in mind, as y'all have mentioned, and well thought out, certainly seem to meet the needs better than retrofitting a building because then you're having to make things fit that weren't designed to fit from the beginning.
So then one more question to go along with that. With all of the separate buildings that are currently housing all the different apartments, does there have been a cost analysis of what it costs to run all of the separate buildings? And then if you actually put it, put it all into one place, it seems that you would even not hurt it.
So they have. The company that was hired, they did an analysis and quickly realized that the square footage that we are currently allotted is not enough, and it is certainly not enough to last us into the future. Matter of fact, this upcoming budget, it, there are discussions going on about adding some detectives. Well, we're already out of detective space, so we're going to have to really makeshift and find and shift a lot of people around to find space for just a couple of more detectives. And if you can imagine the anticipated growth of our community and the increase in staff that will can, that will come along with that, we really need to make some kind of move sooner rather than later because we're already out of space.
Can you tell us what, what concerns-
Just, I wanna be, I love the questions, they're great, but we are recording this, the, the mic needs to be used, so that people that aren't here are able to hear that as well.
Can you tell, can you tell us, Chief, what your current staffing levels are and what your projected staffing levels are? So our current authorized strength for sworn officers is fifty-two, and that counts from the chief to the newest cadet, the two new cadets that actually report to work on Monday for their first day on the job. So we're authorized fifty-two sworn. We also have, in addition to those, we have about thirty staff members that are non-sworn. That includes records personnel, animal control, code enforcement, telecommunications, answering 911, and you name it, some civilian staff members, victim services and whatnot. So we house, we currently employ just a little over eighty employees, both full-time and part-time. Thank you very much. My wife and I were looking at the popul, uh, the number of people that work for the city. Two-hundred-and-fifty-nine, and less than thirty percent are for the police department. Our security, I think you're imbalanced there. I think the police department maybe needs a hundred, a hundred-and-ten people, and the space to be able to support that. Okay? And you need to have, from my own opinion, two facilities, one on the east and one on the west, so you can have faster response. Okay? Now, maybe an outside source looking at where you're spending your money currently for the two-hundred-and-fifty-nine people, maybe, should be considered, to put it right. I don't know how many people are going for our fire department, but that's another basic need we have, and our water and sewer department, those three, you know? Maybe we oughta look at and report to the citizenry on the website where we can justify all these other people. Thank you.
Mr. Ferguson, there was a, there was a staff assessment that was done for the police department. It was quite, it was quite detailed on what they needed and projected future growth. I know Brinkley Sargent also projected future growth as well, with, with, with regards to the current structure and what we needed. The idea of having a building that was suited for police or for a first responder is, is that it's, it's scalable. If you build it for its intended purpose, then it's scalable into the growth that it needs. That's how you project it out and build it. It, it saves money, because it is scalable, instead of having to continue to leave, move them around. I think the other, the other items that we talked about is that any of the other retrofit areas clearly demarcate that they would be temporary fixes for our current police department. We also asked the chief to look at the idea of using best practices to incorporate into the reasons why they need certain things, certain items, and that's through the process of accreditation. And that currently, and in some of the proposed plans, would not allow them to be accredited under best practices in law enforcement. And we also looked at that in this most recent assessment, and looked at, okay, what do you need to, at some point, be accredited to police department? And I think that's important. Yeah.
One of the things that I was gonna talk to Ms. Stark in regards to having a police department built in place, it leaves, you know, one of the concerns is City Hall's gonna need more space. Well, we have the bank building that can be retrofitted for City Hall, it also includes the ability to turn where the police station is housing telecommunications can also be utilized as well. So there would be given, we would be given opportunities to have expansion space.
I've been to all the departments, they're all really small.
Yeah.
Nobody to, no room. So, with having such a short amount of time, is it feasible to be able to come up with these ideas? And like they've said before, there's, we don't know, we don't know anything. So, is two weeks gonna be enough time to actually get anything together and get something valid on the budget, to be able to, on the poll, to be able to vote for that?
I think that's just a rush issue. I think if we rush this and do, don't do our due diligence on this issue, then we could do a dishonor, a disservice to our PD. And by saying that is that if you don't bring all the information and have all the information for the citizens who are, are gonna be paying for this and voting for this, then your, your problem, it's probably gonna fail. And then we won't be able to address this issue for three years. We have to take our time, we have to get this right, and we need to have all the answers, all the questions answered, so that we can move forward with this bond. And we need to, we need to really set our date for May.
So I agree with that, so I guess my question's kinda for the chief, is that, do you feel comfortable having that information ready to be available on it?
I, I think your question was, is, does the police department feel comfortable with the, the same plan that we're kinda hearing resonated about getting information out to the public and sharing all of that information, but also understanding that there's a need for the police department to have a new facility sooner rather than later? And my answer to that is absolutely yes. I am absolutely a firm believer in getting all the information out to the citizens, to the City Council members, so that everybody has a, a good understanding of what we're looking at and making the best decision for our future.
I don't think anybody is necessarily, I'd say up here on the dais as well, opposed to that, getting more information and providing more information to the public. Just wanna remind us that, let's, let's let them provide their input and things like that. We were, we are gonna have plenty of opportunities where the public doesn't get an opportunity or is limited by three minutes on their comments. So I think this is a great opportunity to just continue to get input here.
My name is Lori Huey, I'm a local realtor here in Kyle, and I served in the planning and zoning also. And I agree, we need to wait till May, so people have a, more time to do a feasibility, to look at a location, and you can get more people involved in, in looking at the police station, because the police station is a definite need. When we're looking at leasing versus buying, I think we're gonna see that buying is a better option because of commercial leases, the maintenance that's involved, and usually every couple of years, you have a structure where the rents are gonna keep going up. So I think when you look at the police station as a long-term, you're gonna see buying is better because of the increased costs, and you're already gonna be paying for the maintenance. So those are things to consider. Thanks.
Mr. Partridge?
Thank you again. Chief, I was wondering if you could give us an idea of what your expected personnel needs will be, say in five years, ten years? And what your call service rate is right now, and what you would project it to grow to, not firm numbers, I understand. But this will help us decide to, I mean, myself personally, I want you to have your own facility and built to your purpose for your needs, not just now, but in the future. So, but other people aren't so sure. I was wondering if you could give us what you feel we're looking at, as in, as more population, how your services will climb?
Absolutely, sir, thank you. So, along with our facility studies, as Councilmember Vela was mentioning for us, they did a, a staffing analysis. We also had the Matrix Group, primarily again out of the Dallas area, that came in and did an analysis of our staffing needs. It, it depends on how aggressive and the needs of the community will grow and the that aggressive growth in the community. Right now, we are situated at slightly above one per thousand, we're about 1.1 officer per thousand resident here in the community. Typically, that, those numbers tend to be closer to 1.4 to 1.6. Some cities, the larger ones, tend to, to aim for something higher. And what that means is, it's a number that they can use as they quickly grow to make sure that they're keeping up with their, their staffing needs in the police department. We're a little bit low now, so I suspect that our numbers will continue to grow more aggressively in, for the next several years. And then I expect that to plateau at some point, where we're looking at between 1.4 and 1.6 per thousand. We're not Austin, like you mentioned, and we don't wanna be. So we're very happy to have our hometown feel. One of the things that we try to do is promote a really good community policing program here, so we try to make sure that our officers know the community and the community knows our officers, and, and we're very proud of that. I think we can achieve that with a middle-of-the-road number, like I mentioned. So if we're at fifty-two now, we would probably need to be somewhere in the low seventies over the next several years. And then, the company was given a, an expected growth rate based on city numbers. How many houses could go into some of these new developments that are coming into the community? And it looks like we'll probably hit about a hundred to a hundred-and-twenty officers, somewhere out in the fifteen-to-twenty-year mark. That's why we look at the twenty-year building, so we can predict those numbers. I think our civilian staffing goes along with that at the same rate of growth, and that's typical, because you gotta have, there's a lot of people behind the scenes that, that help the police department run. It's not just the officer in the marked, police crews are out in the neighborhood. It takes a lot of other people inside the PD to help keep things operationally running. You asked for calls for service, we're running about forty to fifty thousand calls per service per year now. I think that number, now that, that includes both emergency and non-emergency calls for service. Currently, we offer a response for every call that we get from citizens. If we are able to grow our police department consistent with our community growth and actually catch up with just a little bit, because we're a little bit behind, by maybe about fifteen to twenty officers. If we're able to catch up, we'll be able, and then maintain that good number, then we can keep that high level of service. As communities grow, specifically the very large communities, they tend to cut back on some services, as they just can't simply keep up with every single call for service. And I'll give you some, some very extreme examples. If you call because you have an animal or something out on your porch that currently frightens you and you need somebody to respond, and you're not able to handle that, we're gonna send an officer, an animal control officer if they're on duty, and we're gonna send an officer if they're not. We currently address very minor accidents where there are no injuries and very, very minor damage, like you might see in a parking lot, two cars backing into each other because they're backing out of their parking spaces at the same time. Some agencies, as they get larger, cut back on those kinds of services and allow those people simply to file that report on the state, online to the state directly. So it kinda depends on the, the staffing that we get, as to how those calls for service will go into the future. We certainly enjoy providing those services, but we also have to keep our staff available for the higher priority calls, where people's lives are in danger and, and such. I, I think that growth trend is gonna continue. Each city has its own unique dynamics. Kyle in particular has a unique dynamic of the interstate, as compared to those cities that are off of the interstate. We also have a very favorable hospital, a lot of people come to our local hospital for services, and should those needs also translate into the need for police officers, then we, we go to that hospital and serve those, even if they live outside the city limits, if they end up in our hospital. There are often times a need for a police officer to visit with them, and that, that's another location for services. We enjoy the growing, the growing shopping areas and everything that we're able to provide. We're strong supporters of that, and we have great business partners in the community. Again, those are, those are calls for service locations for us, and the more we add, obviously our calls for service will continue to go up. I hope I've given you a, a pretty good answer on that, on our intended growth or expected growth, calls for service and staffing.
Yes, sir, thank you. I just wanna clarify, you're saying at present, you're roughly doing forty to fifty thousand calls for service a year? I seem to recall just two years ago, out these front doors, you told me you were handling approximately eight thousand? Two years ago? So you've grown exponentially in that timeframe. Do you expect to continue growing with that, I'll call it percentage of growth, over the next ten years, fifteen years?
Sir, call, service calls. Sure, absolutely. Over the next ten years, do I think that will probably jump somewhere to, to double in ten years? I do. And I think that's because we have some really good, good opportunities for the city to, to enjoy some new businesses, and, and I know that there's some really large expected growth, well, actually on both sides of the community, but I know we've annexed a large area on the west side. So, I, I expect that to continue. One of our number-one call generators, I have to tell you, is the interstate, and people ask us often, why do we see your officers on the interstate? Well, number one, because people call us and tell us about the reckless driver, the intoxicated driver, or the person that pointed a gun at me while I'm driving down the interstate and all that. So we tend to get called to the interstate, and that happens to be one of the unique characteristics of our city, and those are our responsibility to answer those calls. Those are not the states. People often ask. Again, remember, calls for service aren't always the terrible robbery or theft or injury. Sometimes they're as simple as, I accidentally locked my keys in my car, and can y'all try to come help? Or maybe, my child was in the backseat, I got out and I locked the car, and now my child's on the inside of the car, please help quickly. So sometimes we do that, sometimes it's, and we encourage people to call us when they see things suspicious. Our, our community members are our best eyes and ears out in the community, and they do a wonderful job of helping look out for, for their neighbors. Ms. Stark here is the lead person on our community watch program in her community, and she advocates strongly, if you see something suspicious in our community, please call the police, and we want that. So in perhaps some way, we've asked for those calls for services, but I think those are super important, because they help us deter or stop crime or catch criminals before they have an, an opportunity to affect others in, in the city. I do think those numbers will continue to go up, maybe not so much at that exact same rate, because we've had a period of rapid growth. I'm not sure we're gonna be able to sustain that exact rapid growth. And then again, it goes back to the services that I mentioned.
Mayor, first in? I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief? I'm sorry. I just have a real quick question. You said we have fifty-two sworn officers, including the two that start on Monday?
That's correct, including the chief and detectives and whatnot, that's every sworn position, yes, ma'am.
And are we at one-hundred percent of what was budgeted this year?
For the current year, we are fully staffed. That does include those two brand-new cadets that will begin on Monday, and then they will start their police academy the following Monday at the Hayes County Sheriff's Office, where they have an in-house police academy this year.
Okay.
And that, that considers us full staff, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, if I recall, the, the more positions were allotted, but we, we, we reduced to what we feel we could afford at this point, from what I understand on the budget. I know the assessment says and calls for more, and we allotted those vis, vis-a-vis budget, so just wanna make sure that, yeah, we're a hundred percent according to the budget, but the assessment states that they need more.
The only reason I asked that was because in prior years, we had budgeted for more officers, but we were not staffed at that, because we were having difficulty with people getting through the police academies and such. So that was the only reason I asked, was to make sure that we are at one-hundred percent and not at forty, I mean, you know, ninety percent, that's why I asked.
Thank you. I think one of the critical areas for the citizens, for their answer, for, for the location as well, being that I am the emergency management coordinator for the county, is that, when you look at the positioning of a place, and you look at access and egress, and you look at response times, is that we have continued to look at locations that, again, fit the needs of our budget versus what fits the needs for the people. And I understand that we have to be very considerate of our budget, believe me, I understand that. But, with the development across the county that is going to affect the population growth here, and also just business and commerce on our rail lines, it's gonna increase because of the smart terminal in, in, in San Marcos and, and others, is that we have a police department that is considerably cut off, should something happen to our rail line. And it's been in that situation for a very long time. Now, emergency management is something fairly new, but it looks at those contingency plans. We have a location that doesn't have to worry about the railroad, and doesn't have to reconsider having a substation on the other side. We can do that. There's a place that flies over the railroad tracks. And I just wanna remind, this is a public hearing for, we will have plenty of time to, we have the mics all the time.
Mayor Proton?
No, I understand, I just wanna make sure.
But that's what public hearing is about, about being able to share ideas back and forth.
Excuse me, Ms. Naga.
You can gavel me, but I'm just letting you know what it is.
I just want to, just, I want to make sure that the citizens are being able to provide their input.
And they are.
Just wanna make sure we're doing that and giving the microphone mainly to them.
I just wanna say, that did actually answer my question, because I had asked Chief if he had a preferred location, and so, and that was kinda a question, is, because we do have two fire stations on both sides of the track, if, if this bigger one facility for the police department is feasible because of the track, or if it would be a possibility to have two, or like, like it was just mentioned, that if there is a place that we don't have to worry about the training. So that did answer my question a little bit, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Mayor Proton?
And this is definitely something we've talked about. I just wanna make sure, we're gonna go to the, the citizen real quick to get her question, and then I'll, I'll allow you.
Lila Knight, and I, I think, you know, I, I, I'm very appreciative that we're having this public hearing, but I think that it's also very important that we have a back and forth. And that's why I, I really liked the public forums that we had back in 2012, I think they were 2012, somewhere back then. Because we did have the opportunity, and, and we learned a great deal, you know, it's, when, when all we do is listen to y'all, and then all you do is listen to us, we don't learn from each other, really. And so I, I do like the back and forth. I did, I did want to say that I, I think that the police station needs to leave downtown. I did, I did want to say that I, I think that the police station needs to leave downtown because of the railroad and the congestion and everything else. They need a place where they can get on either side of the interstate quickly, where they can get across the railroad tracks quickly, and they can get access to, you know, on and off the interstate quickly. And you cannot do that from downtown. I'm also, when I saw the proposal to do a city hall slash police station in uptown, I was shocked, because I know that those streets in uptown are going to be very small. They're going to be very narrow. And I, and it's going to be very pedestrian-oriented. And I just can't see police cars zooming down those with a lot of pedestrians. And I know when they take off here, there's sirens. I mean, it's sort of scary and unnerving, and I'm not sure that's what you want in sort of the, the environment of uptown. That just doesn't seem quite right for that kind of a development. People are wanting to enjoy themselves, and they're not going to want to be thinking about, oh, police, what's happening? Oh, my God, you know? But I, I think that, you know, that area will have access over the tracks, I believe. And of course, Kyle Park, whatever, whatever that name, I get confused, over there by the HEB, that one has access, yeah, that has access. But I do believe keeping city hall downtown is in keeping with our downtown revitalization plan, which y'all have adopted again, because in that, it does show between the railroad tracks and Main Street, a lot of that being for, as sort of a centerpiece for civic, the development of our, our civic types of things. And I, so I think that keeping of city hall downtown is very appropriate. And of course, you could always expand into the bank building if you needed additional office space, because that would be appropriate for office space. And then one other thing, totally off topic, but it does have to do with the budget. I noticed that you have a new position for a, a Main Street coordinator. And I don't know if it's your intention to actually participate in the Main Street program in the future. You can only apply once a year to Main Street. And it's, I think the application is due in the summers. But until you are actually accepted into the Main Street program, you can't use that term. It's a trademark name. So in the budget, that probably needs to be changed to like a downtown coordinator, because I, I don't want y'all to get into trouble with the Texas Historical Commission or, or the Main Street program. It's actually part of the National Trust for Historic Preservation, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I just thought I'd, I thought I'd mention that to you.
Points very well taken. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Ferguson?
Just a, just a quick comment. If you put the police department on the west side, I know, as a senior citizen, we don't go out in traffic in Kyle because you can't get down sixteen twenty-six from three o'clock to five o'clock. You're, so the police would have a difficult time unless they had a flyover capability, okay? So putting it on one side of the city versus the other side of the city, I think you really do need to consider two locations to give them more area, so they can cover both areas. Thank you very much.
We've actually discussed that.
There's a lot of consideration with that, Mr. Ferguson. It's a lot more involved when you start talking about substations. And it's not just having a building where you have officers parked there. It has to be very, fairly subsistent, and it has to be equipped such as, so if you're looking at something that we can probably scale into at a later point, then we have to look at somewhere where egress and entrance is probably the best for a centralized location to have access to everything. So we start looking at other buildings, then when you start putting those buildings out there, then you have this, you have to equip it a certain way for it to be subsistent. And that's, that's, that's the reason why, is like, first, let's start here, let's start branching out in other areas, whether it's here or the other side, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, really. But what I would look at is it has access to everything, and we do have a location that does have access across, doesn't have to worry about the railroad. Many times, they're sitting at that railroad. It's not busy now, but I've seen them stacked up waiting to get to a call.
Hi, Peter Parter again.
Yes, sir.
Not really a question or a comment. I, I would, being former emergency management itself, I'm very interested in what you had started to say, and I would like to hear the end of it. I want to hear what he has to say, all of you. I know you're trying to give us our chance, but we cannot formulate our comments or rebuttals or whatever unless we hear what you have to say. So, you know, I know we can sit here all day, I'm not even supposed to be here right now, I'm supposed to be elsewhere, but it, what we're talking about is very important, and I, I'm staying. So I'd like to hear what Mr. Villalobos has to say on the professional, never mind city council, never mind personal, professional. And I would like to hear from the chief of police, his professional assessment on where this needs to be. Myself personally, I need that information to formulate into my decision whether to vote for or against anything regarding this. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Chapa.
Evangeline Chapa. About the water, the, Mr. Ferguson bringing it up, it just got me to thinking, because I know my water bill's going, going up. So with development coming up, and people are getting permits to either have hotels, apartments, townhouses, how is the water built in those, each unit that they have in those, do they have their own meter? Like, the electricity has their own meter? Do wat, does water have the same meter? How do, how do those people pay their fees?
Ms. Chapa, the typical way that that's handled with apartment complexes and hotels that have multiple individual units inside of them, they typically have one master meter for the entire property, and then it's up to the property owners to divvy that out, you know, across the board to everyone that lives there, in their, in their, in their rates that they, so a lot of the apartments will include water as a part of their rent, and the, they're setting the rent with a certain expectation based off of their historical usage of how much water everyone's going to use, because the, remember, everyone, that your, our water bill is actually water, wastewater, and solid waste, garbage, and stormwater. So it's, it's four different things on that one bill. So for them, they're getting their, their water through a single meter, and then their wastewater charge is being based off of how much water they consume through that meter, just like you and I, you know, in our homes do.
Okay, thank you.
Sir.
May I speak now?
Yes, ma'am. Just want to, like I said, just, it's a public hearing, it wasn't titled as a discussion, but by, by all means.
In the past, that's exactly how we've used public hearings, is an opportunity for the citizens to speak, ask us questions, and for us to be able to answer back. So I think that it's a dis, a disservice to everybody when you don't allow counsel or you address counsel not to make comments. That's all.
Okay. Point taken. I think it would be appropriate with the questions Mr. Parter had, because I know, thank you for being here, first and foremost, each and every one of you, actually, and for those tuning in. I think it would be helpful to have chief maybe go over some of those points that you had, that you wanted to kind of flesh out. And by all means, I know, I would be happy if you, if chief didn't get every question that you had there, we could reiterate those.
Thank you again, Jeff Barnett, for the record. So I'll make sure I try to cover the, the location and the facility. Question's a little bit larger than us. Obviously, it's a very difficult decision to take into the scope of everything that the council has to consider, but when asked what we need for our facility is, obviously, we need to be able to meet. We, we pride ourselves on doing the job the right way, within standards, exceeding standards. And Councilmember Villalobos attributed a part of this to making sure that we are able to be recognized by the Texas Police Chiefs Association and perhaps the national level with Kalia. Those are the two most premier recognition organizations out there, to make sure you're doing your job in the, with the greatest of standards and following the, the best practices. So with that said, a facility that would allow us to be able to safeguard our infrastructure to properly receive, store, analyze, and, and maintain evidence for court with the, with the utmost of security. And then to keep our, our staff members safe at all times, to keep our property and our equipment and our, including our vehicles, and all safe at all times would be good. And then to have the accountability and the ability to have the accountability practices in place so that we can become recognized by either, either or both of the accrediting boards. As far as location, it, the train tracks, obviously, when you, they pose a certain amount of delay to our officers when we respond to calls. We would like to get away from that, and obviously, right now in our community, that is in the northern portion. The northern portion of our community also happens to be a higher rate of calls for service, but that's also our business district and where the hospital is located. I alluded earlier that we often get called to the hospital for various patients that are brought in for police, and, and police are needed for that. So the north side, close to the interstate, tends to allow us the best travel opportunity to both avoid the train tracks and to respond to where our number, highest number of calls are located. In addition to that, as we talk about other facilities on either side of the track or in other points of the community, Councilmember Villalobos addressed it absolutely correctly. It's, it's a good thing that perhaps we could grow into, our staffing numbers are a little bit low for that right now, and we wouldn't have it adequately staffed. However, we could grow into opportunities to have places to meet an officer in, in the neighborhood instead of having to drive across town. It wouldn't be a place, if we did it too early, where officers were really located. It would just be like a storefront where you could meet them, call and meet them in advance, call in advance and meet them later. As far as the location for us, it's anywhere, perhaps where we're away from the train tracks if possible, from an emergency management standpoint for, for train accidents, although the trains that go through our community rarely if ever carry thing, well, rarely carry things that are of significant concern, too, too many feet away from the train tracks. However, that would be important for us as well. Accessibility to both sides of the community, actually, if you want to look at it all four sides, east and west, and then just look at it from a north-south standpoint, I think anywhere close to the interstate and on the northern portion of the community is going to serve us well, and we can get, we can get where we need to from there. We do try to have our officers complete reports in the field as often as possible. They were afforded the opportunity to have some, some laptop-type computers in the car, and they can actually type their police report in the field while remaining in the community in case they're needed to respond to something quickly, and they can submit that electronically to their supervisors. So at the same time, we try to use technology to take, to make the best use of our officers' time and location as well. Did that happen to answer by chance, or is there one I'm missing?
I'm wondering, do you have a specific location that is owned by the city that you would prefer to put your police department at, right, right now? Say, if you had your way, and it happened tomorrow morning, where would you want to go? A specific location.
Okay, based on, I, I hear exactly what you're saying, and based on property that the city currently owns or has, has potential rights to, I would say in the northern portion in what, what would be considered the overall Plum Creek addition. I know that's a very vast piece of property, and it's my understanding that the city may have some negotiating rights as to what parcels might be of best use to the city. I'm not aware of any other city-owned property that provides a better location to, to build a suitable police station on that would last the city twenty years and make the best use of our tax dollars.
Chief Barnett?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a property that we don't own that would be better suited for us, this facility?
I do personally think so. I've shared that, I know there was a, and I have shared that in the past, behind closed doors, because when you start talking about the city potentially buying privately-owned property, sometimes that can inflate the value of that property quickly, so there are other pieces of.
But there is another location.
Yes, ma'am. We've identified a few locations that serve us well, mostly for the accessibility, for both the citizens and our officers, and they're there, yes, ma'am.
I think it's also important that, just from a, from a regional planning standpoint as well, is that we are all law enforcement partners to our region. And when you put into that perspective, is that it's not just our citizens here. It's the reason why we're licensed by the state to do what they do. And there have been times in our recent history where resources and assets have been asked to come and help. We have an obligation to do that in our emergency management plan as well. So it's just, as a consideration, as a long-term plan, to have access across the board in case San Marcos needs it, in case Buda needs it. God forbid, anything were to happen that they need our resources. That's also something that we have to consider in a location.
Do we not then have their resources available to us?
Sir, would you mind speaking at the mic for the record? Thank you.
Randy Pilafan, I live in Plum Creek. And, and I understand your point that we need to be able to help others. I didn't hear you say that we have the commitment from others to come help us.
We do.
And if so, then why do we need to do something so much larger?
It's not that we need to do anything much larger, it's that we need to make a decision for long-term planning, not a short-term plan. That's, that's been my, my perspective the entire time. And we're, and it's also my perspective is that we bring it forward to you so you can vote on it. It's not that I'm making a decision, but I want all of those things to come forward. You're going to make a decision along with all the other constituents coming forward. But if we're going to do that, I want every piece of information to come forward in, in, in light of what we're supposed to be doing regionally and what we're supposed to be sharing across our, our area. That's all.
So is there a written commitment regionally?
There sure is, it's under the emergency management plan.
And is that emergency management plan on our website?
It, it, we do have access to the emergency management plan, and it's also accessible on the county website, of which everybody should have access to.
Okay, that's good. All right, I had another question, but I'll, I'll find it again. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I agree, it is something the emergency management needs to be considered in anything we do as far as the city goes, because I've been in hurricanes, helping people, setting up shelters, dealing with police officers, firemen, all that good stuff. I think one of the biggest considerations, and I believe this question is, do we have mutual aid agreements, reciprocal mutual aid agreements, specifically on paper, saying, if you're in trouble, these people will come and help you? I believe that's what you're trying to say, sir? And yes, there are. I can tell you from my own personal experience, they have that as well as with the police department, et cetera. When considering a police department, we need to consider those mutual aid agreements, because they will affect us, God forbid, there's another big hurricane, we have to send officers, we have to send firemen, we have to send paramedics, doctors, nurses. You would not believe the people that show up for that, and the professions that are needed and required, engineers, incident commander, deputy. So this will drain our resources here when it happens, so we do need to consider that and plan for it.
I guess my question then becomes one of the county. Based on what you're saying, the county should be in a situation where they have the resources that we need to have and the training resources. We don't need to build those training resources. They should all be at the county level.
Yes, sir. We're, I'm not asking to build training resources, I'm asking to be considerate as we do long-term planning, as that's one of the things that we may have to address at some point, whenever. And, and that's, that's also the reason why I feel like we need more time to address this issue. And that's the reason why I'm suggesting that we move it till May. And that's the reason why I'm asking for more information for us to assess the actual cost and what's in the best interest of City of Kyle.
And, and I think that's great, and I agree with you.
Thank you, sir.
You know, I, if people actually understood the minuscule amount of money the city gets to operate compared to our tax bill, and if we could find some way of negotiating with the county saying, okay, you're taking too much money, give it back, so, to our city, okay, that'd be, they would understand that a little bit more, you know, because we're assessed by the county. And let's see, we've gone, disputed our taxes every year, and we've got a reduction, okay, from what they were planning on doing, but they have the right to raise our tax assessed value ten percent per year, okay? If we just take our current rate, that's going to raise our taxes five hundred dollars a year, typically, three to five hundred rate, that's going to raise our taxes $500 a year, typically, $300 to $500 a year for the average $200,000 home. Maybe we need to find some way of lynching them, okay, or controlling their tax take on our, our wallets. We're not getting very much service from the county, that I know of. Our fire department is our fire department, our police department is our police department.
And so, it's an emergency services district, sir. And then they have their own board that governs their own tax unit.
Fire's not under the city.
Right.
Okay.
That, that, that's, that's typically what, what happens. And I can tell you that the county has proposed a budget that's pretty close, they're getting pretty close to the effective tax rate. The increase for the average house home, from the county's perspective, is $90, as an increase annually, this coming, this coming, this coming budget here. I can also say that the largest taxing units probably is going to be your school districts. Those are the largest, as far as the piece of pie, when you're looking at taxes, and the counties is a little bit lower than, than the cities, they're pretty close. So, I, I, and, and just looking at it from a, you know, we talk about taxing units, school districts, the expense is, is tremendous. Of course, we're investing in our future, right?
We're investing in our future, we're not protecting our present. A school can get a $250 million bond, but we're scrimping to get a $20 million bond for our city? Excuse me, Taj Mahal versus functioning?
Well, that's a different entity that you need to discuss with. I mean, that's not something that any of us up here-
But we're, we are the taxpayers.
Yeah, and I completely understand.
And we approve that stupid thing.
And I completely understand, but I think we're getting off of our, our conversation, which is our actual budget. So, I think that we need to bring the conversations back to just city budget and city-
Thank you very much.
Stuff that we can actually make an impact on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's some, there's a little, not so much clarity on what that is. I think that's why the questions are coming up, though. Ms. Parter?
Me again. One question I have is, I heard mentioned earlier about outside funding. Do we have anybody that is applying for grants, or, or anything like that? Do we have somebody that can even do that? Has anybody looked into it? Because I know for a fact, I just, I was involved with a security grant for an organization whereby a university was pledging $250,000 a year to this organization dealing with police officers on their premises. And I can't tell you all the details, obviously, but they were given that grant of 250 a year, $250,000 a year, and they had to hand back some reports, but it's well worth looking into. If we can have somebody find an organization, or government, or whatever, grant, maybe it's worth a shot?
At this time, we don't have a grant writer on staff, and that has been proposed in the past.
Just a thought, thank you.
Talking about grant writers, at CAS, we visited several senior centers, Kamau County, Bryant, and now Round Rock. They, they get considerable funding through grants in those counties, okay? Millions of dollars. And of course, when the city gets over $50,000, we can, we get to a new status on a federal level. We get, we, we have more monies available to us from the federal government. Not that you want to take too much from the federal government, because they're going to be bankrupt in a little while, because they just raised the budget another trillion dollars. But I think you do need to invest in getting a grant writer for the city. Thank you.
It's got quiet, but I've got one more question.
By all means.
The real reason I came here this morning was to see what the decision was made on the pipeline. Last week, when I was at this meeting, it was tabled in private session, and therefore, tabled in public session. Is there an impact of this pipeline on our budget as it runs through the City of Kyle? And I guess you're aware of the explosion that happened a little bit north of here regarding those pipelines? Will that impact our ability to do anything about it?
Yes, sir. I certainly appreciate that question, and that is an ongoing thing. We may have more on that on our Tuesday budget meeting, I mean, our Tuesday regularly scheduled council meeting. This particular item was, or this particular special call meeting, we, we called last Saturday to continue discussion on the proposed budget, the tax rate, and the PD. Unfortunately, not anything in particular on the pipeline. That is something that is still, you're right, it has been tabled, there's still ongoing discussion with our ordinance. I'm sure you, you saw with the lawsuit as well, just nothing that we have that we would be reporting or discussing there.
Do you foresee an impact on the budget with this pipeline?
The future budget, absolutely. If we're talking about mitigation of an incident, and there's, there's no mitigation plan in place currently right now, typically, that plan like that costs millions of dollars to create, to understand where our gaps are, and according to a gap assessment for our response, that would include fire, police, medical services, emergency medical services, EMS, operations, all those different things. I, we, we can definitely see that in the future, and currently, we do, we do not, we don't, we're not, we're not to the point where we have a consideration of a mitigation plan, but that's definitely going to create some, some budgetary issues in the future if we do not have the opportunity to engage the organization that's building the pipeline, to actually absorb some of those costs and help us create that plan. So, yes, it will, it will, to some degree, but it's still too early on to understand how that's going to happen.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? We're happy to hear. Otherwise, if there's nothing else, we will, we do have another, our next scheduled budget meeting for August 14th. I don't know if we have the time quite yet, but it's most likely an evening, one, six or seven o'clock, am I often saying that? So, that's August 14th, I believe it's a Wednesday. We do have our regular scheduled council meeting that will, the agenda's already out. There are some discussions as well, I think there's another public hearing just like this regarding these items as well, Tuesday night, amongst other things as well. Those are the next two that I'm aware of. I know we have at least one more in August as well, as far as a budget meeting.
Mayor Proton, I think, though, that public hearing next week will be a more formal public hearing, so there won't be back and forth, I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that.
So, that's Tuesday night, she's referring to, at our regularly scheduled council meeting, we will have another public hearing regarding this. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Close the public hearing.
Okay. Do we need a motion to close the public hearing, just close it?
You just close it.
Okay, I'll close, I mean, we'll have, yes, okay, I'll close the public hearing for this item. And next, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor Proton, I want a motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Tenario, second by Councilmember Shield to adjourn, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Meeting is adjourned.